Good evening and welcome to the May 10, 2021 meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, which suspends a requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all meetings of the Board of Public Bodies are allowed to and encouraged to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, please dial 1-808-650-3123 and enter access code 235-235-861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As a preliminary matter, my name is Doreen Goodrich, the chairman, and I will now confirm that all members and employees participating in the agenda are present and can hear me. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Berthil?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Town Manager Julie Jacobson?
Yes.
Assistant Town Manager and CFO Ed Kazanovich?
Yes.
And Administrative Assistant Sharon Kwakawski?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I'd also like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded, and I remind members that all votes taken tonight are being done by a roll call vote. We have a pretty brief agenda tonight, but our first agenda item under public hearings and presentations is an agenda item that the town manager asked me to put on the agenda, which is recognition and thank you to Chairman Doreen Goodrich. So I'm going to turn it over to the town manager and let her handle this item.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I appreciate it. Hopefully everybody can hear me. Thank you and welcome all of you. There are a number of people who are on this remote meeting, and as Doreen is now able to start looking around at all the tiles on the screen, she'll actually start to see who is on this call. I also want to acknowledge that Doreen, your sons Sean and Keith and your husband are participating, as well as some of your family and your future daughter-in-law, Alyssa. So we know that they're on this call as well, which is great because we all want the opportunity for you and your family to hear the tributes that all of us want to pay to you this evening. So for those who are watching this meeting and don't know Doreen, which is probably impossible because I don't think anyone could log on to the meeting and not know Doreen, but just to set this up appropriately, Doreen Goodrich is our chairman of the board, and she's been on the Board of Selectmen for the last 12 years. And this evening is her last Board of Selectmen meeting as a member of the Board of Selectmen. And we do have a number of speakers that would like to pay tribute to Doreen. So I know it's awkward because you are the chair, but if you don't mind, everybody, I'll go through the list that I have and call on everyone. And I would just ask that everybody mute yourself until you're called on and then speak so we don't get any static. And then after everyone has gone, I'll make sure that I got everybody in there. So I think with that being said, and I also have to say, it's not easy to keep a secret around here. And we did it. We all did it. A number of people that we've all spoken to kept this secret. And Doreen, hopefully all of these smiling, familiar faces come as a surprise to you because we feel bad with COVID. We can't have a in-person get-together, but having a remote get-together is the next best thing that we could all do for you as you've done so much for us. So I'm going to turn it over right now to Senator Michael Moore.
Good evening. Thank you, Aunt Julie, and the other Board of Selectmen or select people who are present tonight and everyone else who is here. It's an honor to be here tonight to give recognition and thanks to someone I've known for many years and someone I work with every day, a great person. I want to say employee because I really don't consider her an employee. I consider someone, a good friend and professional who doesn't really need a boss, you know? She's someone who works on her own, doesn't need to be told what to do. For all of you who have called my office and you get the opportunity to talk to Doreen, what a wonderful person she is and how she cares. I think that's the important thing is that she does care. It's not just a job to her. As I was trying to prepare for this tonight, I was talking to my chief of staff, and I had her put down a few things because I was trying to record everything that Doreen does. I don't want to miss out on some of the things that she's done over her career. And this is even before she was involved with me. Thank you all on all the turkey dinners and the St. Patrick's Day dinners that we've done in Auburn. Well, there's the chef, Lil Cox, who actually even one of the people who helped think of the ideas to do a lot of these community-based, these community-based functions. But just some other things that she has accomplished on her 12 years on the board. I think the majority of that, at least half, is then serving as the chairperson on the board. But Doreen has been instrumental in the town getting the tax incremental, increment financing policy, supporting a green community designation application, and supporting the town's new omnibus, general, and administrative bylaws, one of the countless others. He advocated for the public donation collection bin regulations. And I think this actually goes with everything she's done with me in the town. He's helped create the senior tax work off plan and the creation of a citizens' leadership academy. Again, everyone knows Doreen, and I think you can tell that she's not doing this or she wasn't doing this just to be a select person, the recognition of being a select person, she's doing it because she does care about everyone. And I can't think of someone I've been more happy and honored to serve with and work with over the last 12 years. So in recognition of that, and I want to give everyone time to, whoever else has time to speak. But we also had to do this in secret because Doreen is the, she's usually the person that's getting the citations and getting all this for my constituents. So as you were trying to secretly do this, plan this for her, we were secretly in the office trying to have this on my calendar and get this ready without her noticing it. So I have in recognition of her, all her great work for my office and for the community. Thank you, Doreen. And I have a Senate citation, which I will read. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate official citation. "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Doreen Goodrich in recognition of your 12 years of exemplary public service to the residents of the town of Auburn as a member of the Auburn Board of Selectmen and over four years of leadership as chairwoman of the board. Be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, the citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and that tested two and a copy there are transmitted by the clerk of the Senate, that sign by the Senate President and myself." And I don't know if you can see this or not. I'm going to try to do this, but the Senate citation that I will make arrangements to meet with Doreen. But Doreen, thank you for all the work you've done in Auburn, for everyone there. And again, thank you because you really are the type of person that we want in public service that cares both for the community and the people. So thank you. And I want to say good luck, but you're not leaving my office. Thank God.
No, I'm not.
But thank you very much and thank you for letting me be part of this today. It really is nice to pay recognition to someone who gives so much. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words.
Thank you. And now I'm going to turn to State Representative Paul Frost.
Thank you, Town Manager Jacobson. You, Madam Chair, congratulations on your many years of service in the town of Auburn. You've been a good friend. You've been a great public servant. You're just a person, and I'm so thankful for the opportunity to be in this fashion. Obviously, great if we could all together, fresh off watching my daughter play high school for Auburn's varsity softball, which they did win tonight. So great for them, a great game. And but just how much you've done for the community is tremendous, always there. You've always been involved. You've always been a caring, compassionate individual. You've treated people back, even people who don't agree with you. You've treated them with respect and dignity. And I think that's something that speaks volumes for Selectmen, if you will, and how we'll be remembered years and years and years down the road. You certainly were a contributor, and you certainly made a difference. And I think that's what we all hope whenever we serve in something, whether it's short term or long term, that whatever we did, we made a difference. And you say that in your role as a member of the Board of Selectmen. I do want to say, so very proud of you and all the work you've done and how personal you've always been to me, very nice to my family. When my daughter, years ago, you know, had a tumor, we didn't know what it was. You know, for a short period of time, we didn't know her. And, you know, scared the hell out of us. Ended up being benign and ended up being something that was able to be removed from our ovary. So not only just personally, but you sent her a card. You sent her a little gift card to let her go to get some ice cream and play some mini golf. And it just came out of nowhere. You didn't have to do that. You didn't, no one asked you to do that. And you just did something like that on your own. Always just been a very good person. And I, you know, I will never forget that.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, and God bless. I have a citation for you as well. And we'll make sure we get that to you from the Commonwealth, you know, from the Massachusetts House Representatives, which will recognize you for your years of service on the Board of Selectmen. And on behalf of me and all of the members of the Massachusetts House Representatives, congratulations, Doreen, and I look forward to continuing to work with you through Mike's office and in every other way possible for the, thank you, Doreen.
Thank you, Representative, and thank you for your friendship.
Thank you, Representative. And now that we've heard from our state legislative delegation, I want to turn to our local elected officials. So I'm going to start with Tristan La Liberty, who is the vice chair of the Board of Selectmen. Tristan?
Thank you, Julie. Doreen, believe it or not, you were the first person that I ever voted for. I turned 18 two days before the town elections in 2015. And so you will forever be the first candidate that I ever voted for. Since then, you've been a mentor and a friend to me on the board. I'm particularly grateful to you for taking me under your wing these past few months as your vice chair. Your extensive knowledge and wisdom have been a tremendous asset to me, to the whole board, and of course, to the town of Auburn. And I mean, I want to say it's difficult to imagine having a meeting without you in it. And while we often, as a board, try to acknowledge the hard work of our town administration and for everyone's efforts to go above and beyond what's asked of them to do, the very same is true of you, and we very rarely point that out or say it. Your work in these meetings is only a fraction of the work that you put in. And the rest of your work can often be overlooked by us and by the community. You once told me that serving on the select board is really what you put into it. And what you put into it has set a tremendously high bar for the rest of us to follow. You've given your whole self to the duties of the board and have gone above and beyond with setting goals and seeing them through. We're all incredibly grateful for your sacrifices, that you did not make that made our lives easier and made the town a better place. I've watched you tirelessly work for your constituents and vote for their best interests in mind. And at times, I frankly wanted to stand up and applaud you for your level-headed and quick thinking as chairman, even in our most contentious meetings. And I've heard the expression that some people make more than a career out of their work. They make a difference. And that goes without saying that you have made an incredible difference for the residents of the town of Auburn and for all of us. And for that, I thank you, and I'm glad that you will continue to be working, hopefully, as a town meeting member and in Senator Moore's office. So thank you, Doreen.
Thank you, Tristan. Thank you.
If I could now turn to Selectman Dan Carpenter.
Well, I think a lot of us didn't think this day would come, Doreen. I still remember when you wandered into the planning board room over 20 years ago as a resident, a relatively new resident up on the hill, and you had concerns about a project that we were reviewing at the time. And I saw then how you communicated with your neighbors and tried your best to find out as much as you could. And it was an interesting interaction. I never thought that I would have the privilege of serving with you in elected office, but I have now for almost seven years. The best thing that I can wish for you is many years of good health with your family and anything else that you might want to do. Hopefully, the Senate doesn't overwork you, but we know that that type of work never stops. But I wish you the best of luck, and you know, you have a lovely family, and I know how committed you are to them and they to you, and that's a testament to you as an individual. So good luck.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Now, Selectman Lionel Burke.
Hi, Doreen. With everyone else, you know, when I became a selectman five years ago, you know, you reached out to me. You're very cordial to me. You made me feel like I was part of the team right away. Just the way that you handled questions, I was very comfortable anytime I had a question, you know, to go to you. Also, I see Kenny on the phone, I mean, on the call. But, you know, you guys are always there, and I really appreciated the fact that being, not that I hadn't been in politics before. I was on the Bay Path School Committee and served some other boards. But being a selectman is certainly a big deal, and it's an important role. And you guys certainly helped me out with that. Like I say, I've been on for five years now, and I can honestly say that I don't think I would make it to 12 years. But if I did, there's no way that I could do it as graciously and as well as you've done it over the 12 years. You've really been a great mentor and also become a great friend. And I'll, you know, we'll always have that. It'll be sad not having you on the board anymore, but certainly having the friendship, that's forever. So just want to wish you the best of luck and health and happiness, you know, for the rest of your days. And I appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you, Lionel.
Thank you. And now, Selectman Scott Ren.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Hey, lady. How you holding up?
I'm good.
Well, thank you. You, the mentorship, you really helped me come along as a new selectman, showing me the ropes, giving me guidance. And like Lionel said, you do it with such grace and with such tact. You're always right here. You're unwavering. You handle situations perfectly. And even when you're not, when you don't think you're mentoring me, I'm watching you. I watch the way you act. I watch what you do. And I've really taken a lot from you. I think it goes without question, everybody knows how much you care about this town and what you've done for this town, which in and of itself is a lesson. But you've cared about the board. You've cared about the Board of Selectmen. You've helped us all come along and really be a good comprehensive or a good unit acting together. So I can't thank you enough. Don't think you're off the hook. You should really set up a consulting RC because I'll be calling with questions for you. But I do wish you the best. I'm happy to call you a friend, and again, I'll be calling plenty. So congratulations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott. And now we have an elected member of our school committee, Jessica Harrington, who's saying a few words on behalf of the school committee and as your friend.
Can you hear me? Hi. I'll try and get through this without crying. But thank you, Julie, for including us. And I'm speaking on behalf of the school committee, of course. George meant to get on this call as well, but wasn't able. He got his son's truck. So I just want to just tell you, I want to reiterate what Scott said because he nailed a lot of my, he stole some of my thunder, I have to say. No, but you have been such an incredible mentor and a friend, a great colleague. You've given me so much courage to do the things I've done in town. And, you know, ever since we bonded over both being PTO presidents, and you said, if you can do that, you can do anything. It's true. It is, you know, that is not an easy job, and I'm sure, and neither is school committee and neither is Board of Selectmen. So I certainly honor you for all you've done, and I'm just, I'm excited for you and what's coming down the road. And I hope you get to relax and enjoy your family time. And we will stay in touch, I'm sure. Love you.
Love you too. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. And if I may, another elected official in town was unable to be here tonight, and she asked that I just read the statement. This was from Deb Gremo, who's our town clerk. And I'm sorry, I'm going to keep turning my picture offs because I think the more pictures that are on the, my computer anyway slows down a little bit. So while I'm reading this, I'll keep it on. So this is from Deb Gremo, town clerk. "Thank you, Doreen Goodrich. I'd like to recognize and personally thank you for the tremendous heartfelt effort you've put forth each and every day for so many years. Your service to the town of Auburn is nothing less than exceptional. Your professionalism, kindness, dedication, and the ability to always put the town's needs above your own will sadly be missed. I am proud to call you my friend. All the best on your future plans," from Deb Gremo. So I wanted to say that. And now we're also happy to have a former elected member of the committee of the Board of Selectmen back, Ken Holstrom. So I'm going to turn to Ken.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Chairman, the only thing I can do, everything has been said. I can say so much more with a virtual, endearing hug. Thank you so much for all you've done, Doreen. You have been just the best. You've upheld the visions of the Board of Selectmen to be the best of the best. And Auburn has very much benefited by the support you've given it. You've given the town support. You've given the departments the support. You're not afraid. You've always been forward, above-board, professional, and personable. And that makes it very, very important. Doreen, I can't say anything more than what everybody else has said, but I just want to say thank you. I've learned a lot from you. I will continue to learn a lot from you because you're not going to go away. And all I can do is say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I hope to see you soon.
Thank you, Ken. And we also, I just want to make sure because I don't see it on the screen, and I know she's been trying to log in. A former member of the board, Denise Bretherton, wanted to say a few words. So I don't see her name on there, but Denise, if for any reason you're on telephone where I can't see your name, please speak up. And I'll give it a minute. And if not, I know she was having a little difficulty logging in, so I don't see her right now. So I'll go back if I do see her on the call. So I want to go with another elected official who we're happy to have here, and that is Guy Gluckus.
Hi, Julie, Madam Manager. I will be very brief, but I just wanted to say, Doreen, congratulations. How are you? I just, hey, I just wanted to take a minute just to echo what my former colleague and friend, Mike Moore, and Paul Frost said, and all the good people that are on this Zoom tonight. You are a special person, Doreen, without a doubt, and you've touched a lot of lives. And you're one of the few people that can say it really made a difference in this community. And I mean that. Every time I've called you, whether it was as an elected official, as a resident, or just as a concerned citizen, you always, I think, just demonstrate the ultimate professionalism, always courteous, always concerned, always caring. And really, when I think about you, I think about somebody that wanted to run for office for all the right reasons. You didn't have an hidden agenda. You weren't out for this or that. You just truly wanted to help people. You love making a difference in your community. You love fighting for Auburn, and you like doing all the things that are necessary and all the things that really make great elected officials. And those officials certainly are the bedrock of a community. So I just want to say on behalf of myself and a grateful citizenry, Doreen, you're a special lady. You've done a great job in the Board of Selectmen, and I can only hope that you stay active now and in the future. God bless you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I also, I don't see his name on here, so if you are on here, Chet Stensel, our moderator. I'm not sure if I see him, but I will go back if I do. And I want to now go to our former moderator and a good friend of Doreen, Charlie Baker.
Good evening. Good evening, Doreen.
Hi, Charlie.
When Doreen first ran for selectman, I was happy to support her because I believed she was intelligent, talented, and hardworking. And Lord, was I ever right in that opinion. As moderator, working with Doreen as either member or chair of the board, I saw her excellence firsthand. But as everyone in politics knows, it finally comes a time to say goodbye. As she departs, Doreen leaves behind a record that those who follow her will have difficulty equally. Good luck, Doreen, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie. And I'm looking around the screen, as usually happens, as I'm looking at the screen and I have people's names written down, the tiles move on me. So I'm hoping I'm getting everybody that is on the screen to do this. So I'd like to ask Jeff LeBonte to speak.
He needs a minute.
Jeff, it's one minute, so.
I really used to go to meetings and I didn't know how to unmute myself. I'm sure Doreen would have helped me if I had been able to ask her because she's helpful that way. Doreen, first of all, I just want to thank you on behalf of myself and Auburn Mass Daily and John Anderson, of course, for your tireless work, your service to the town of Auburn, your dedication to the town of Auburn and to the residents. It's really, it's unparalleled. It's a thankless job oftentimes, too often, and know that we do appreciate and have appreciated your efforts all along. You're at every event. Every time I go to cover something, I go to take pictures, you're always there. And you're the first person to encourage people in their activities and to congratulate them when they succeed. And always been available for questions, discussions, just really above and beyond what I think most people would expect from a select person. This Auburn's a better place to work and to live because of all the work you've done, and we're going to miss your leadership. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. And now the Reverend Dennis Knight, if you could say a few words.
Hi, Dennis.
Hey, Doreen. Well, it's good that I came on the tail of Jeff because we both represent the community center here at Hackitog. As I was listening, I thought there's definitely a theme developing, presenting itself. In the image I get is what we all know about icebergs. That seven-eighths of what the iceberg is about is below the surface, and that's really you, Doreen. What shows on the screen here and in these events is just the tip of everything you're about. just the tip of everything you're about. You've spent a lot of hours in this building in the kitchen, literally preparing food to help and serve other people, assembling and governing and managing meetings and all that kind of thing. And you and I have had a lot of chance to talk sometimes at those occasions. And as I think about it, always, Doreen, always, your conversation focuses on what is happening with the people of Auburn in the central mass community, and what kind of things are going on that will help and improve their lives. You really live at ground level. You live where everyone lives and where all the rest of us are. So your application on the board, in my estimation, is just the end, the tip of all the groundwork you do to help this community so thoroughly and completely and comprehensively. It's, I get the image of a mantle, the mantle of care and concern. And I have the feeling that that mantle rests on your shoulders. And it's the last thing you take off when you go to bed at night. And it's the first thing you put on when you get up in the morning. The welfare of everyone else is always close to you and a part of your heart and a part of what you express. And this, this is only one phase, no doubt, because the Doreen who functions at that level is going to function at that level, no matter where she is and what she's doing. So bravo to you, kid. Thanks an awful lot for what you've done for all of us. And my own personal appreciation too for who you are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. And now, let's see, I'm looking, how about Sari Dix?
The Auburn Historical Society is of course, very proud to call Doreen our friend. You've, you're going to go down in history, no doubt, as one of the kindest and most caring select people we've ever had. You've helped us with our fundraisers, you've helped us with questions. You've always been a great supporter. And now that you're going to have time on your hands, we can always use another volunteer who loves Auburn. Thank you very much.
I do love Auburn. Thank you, Sari.
Thank you, Sari. I just want to make sure also if Ken Ethier, I believe, may have logged on, but I can't see. So Ken, if you're on. Not sure. Okay, I can always go back if someone's.
Hello?
Good. Hi, Ken.
Hi, Doreen.
Hey, Ken. What a nice surprise.
I wouldn't want to have missed it. The, the thing that I'm going to talk about a little bit, of course, you do the spaghetti supper. Everybody knows that. The museum wouldn't be there without the financial support from you. But I'd like to share with everybody something a little bit more private between you and I was the marker at the bottom of Melvin Road that was put up in 1930, cast iron marker, telling about the Indians that lived up on Packard Chog Hill. They lived there part of the time. But I, that had been there since 1930. I'd seen it all my life. I went one day and it was gone. I involved the, everybody in the city, it was to the mayor and the historical commission and everybody else. It was a mystery as to where it was. Nobody could help me. I wanted it back up there in a terrible way. And I, and I called you, I don't know how many times. I was always expecting you to get, get sick of hearing from me, but you're always very cheerful. Anyways, the long and short of the story is this, that, that marker is there now, the big cast iron marker, due to you. And, and I just would like to invite everybody in the town to take a drive by the bottom of Melvin Road on, on South Bridge Street. Look at that marker. And if not for Doreen, that wouldn't have gotten back up there. It's all restored. It's beautiful. Thank you, Doreen. Thank you for all of your done. Just thanks so much. God bless.
Thank you for your kind words. And it is a beautifully historically done sign. And take Ken, Ken up on it and go check it out.
Thank you. And now I'm going to ask Paula American, who's a longtime friend, is a member of our library Board of Trustees, to say a few words.
Thank you. I'm probably the least technology person on this feed. So I spent a lot of time trying to log in via computer and I didn't have success. So I apologize for my poor phone reception. I moved to Auburn 14 years ago. And when I got settled, I said, searched around and tried to find someone who I could connect with through the community to get involved. And Doreen Goodrich was the name that was put forth to me. And I, you know, it took me a little while to decide what to do with that information. And in the meantime, I went to a fundraiser for Auburn Youth and Family Services. Now, not all of you know Doreen's talents. I think I know most of them. Well, she can dance. And I sat there and I watched this woman in a poodle skirt get twirled around the floor. And they, she was introduced as Doreen Goodrich. So that instantly intimidated me more because not only can I not dance, I don't know Robert's Rules of Procedure, and I certainly can't conduct myself like Doreen Goodrich. So eventually, we connected over my inability to dance. And I am so impressed with Doreen, as you all have said, I don't want to repeat. She's an incredibly intelligent person. I'm sure most of you have been recipients of her chicken pies. And she's an extraordinary individual. And Auburn, as the community and as a town, has been extremely fortunate to have her. And we will miss her. But I think as Mr. Ethier said, and Sari said, we can, we can find another way to lure her in. Perhaps dancing, perhaps cooking is a career. Thank you, Doreen.
I think I'll stick to cooking. Thank you, Paula.
Thank you, Paula. And now I can always go back. If I miss someone, please let me know if I missed any of the residents. I'd like to just turn to a couple of the department heads who wanted to speak as well. So I'm going to start with Chief Coleman. Fire Chief Coleman.
Thank you, Julie. Good evening, Doreen.
Thank you.
We had to keep this secret, you know, when I saw you earlier today. So I just wanted to take a quick minute to thank you for everything that, you know, you've done for not only me personally, but all of the support that you've thrown towards the fire rescue department in your 12 years as selectman. But most importantly to me, the 10 years that I've, I've been the chief. You've been one of my biggest fans in this role. You've been one of the biggest fans of the department. And because of that, we've, we've been allowed to grow. You know, as the community grows, as the call volume grows, you've always heard, you know, our calls for, you know, whether it was increased staffing or new equipment, you've always thrown your support behind the department. And that's, has not gone unnoticed by not only myself, but Deputy Chief Johnson, who's here on the call tonight, my entire command staff, as well as the entire department. We truly appreciate all of the work and effort that you've done. We appreciate you taking the time to participate in the Citizens' Fire Academy. We had a great time with you in that program. We think you had just as much fun, maybe a little too much fun. But, but we enjoyed having you there. I just, you know, words, words really can't express just the way that, that I feel about you personally. Not only, you know, Doreen, the, the human being, but Doreen, the elected official. You'll always have a special place in my heart. So again, on, on behalf of myself, Deputy Chief Johnson, and the whole fire rescue department, thank you for everything you've done. And much like we always say to people, we're here if you need us. We know that you're there if we need you as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. And now Chief, Police Chief, Andrew Lucas.
Hi, Doreen. How are you?
Good. Good. How are you, my friend?
Well, on, on behalf of the police department, I would like to say, thank you for 12 phenomenal years of support. You have never, and I would underline the word never, you've never not supported the Auburn police. You've always been there for us at every single turn. On a personal note, I have cherished our years of friendship. You've called me over the years with many different issues. I've called you over the years with many different issues. And you've always been very, very supportive. I remember when I decided to run for selectman for the seat that I never took, I remember standing in your driveway, talking to you. And I remember you saying to me, Andy, if you run, you will win. And you were spot on. You were 100%. And I was, I was really hesitant. I didn't know that, that I would win. But you, you gave me the confidence to put the other step forward and put my name on the ballot and, and run for that seat. And, and I thank you for all of your, your advice and friendship over the years. I think.
Yep, we lost you. Andy, we lost you.
I think if, if my dad were here, he'd give you a hug and he'd tell you congratulations. And thank you for being there. You're, you're one of a kind.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And now I'm going to turn to Darlene Coyle, who's our Director of Development and Inspection Services.
Thank you, Julie. Hi, Doreen.
I just have to jump in. Yay, we got the donation biz done.
We did it. We did it with your help. Absolutely. Well, on behalf of the Department of Development and Inspection Services, I'd like to thank you for your support over the many years that you've been on the Board of Selectmen. You've always, always been supportive of me from the moment that, that you voted on the appointment. I know that we have collaborated the years on countless community events, a lot of them that were named tonight. And we've been able to make a lot happen by being creative and using just your energy, your excitement, and your willingness to, to meet in the middle and figure out how to make things happen. It's a bittersweet moment because we're going to miss you. And we're going to miss your leadership. And your role as chair, but I know how much your family means to you. And now you get to spend more time with the people that love you. Thank you for being the caregiver that you are. Congratulations on your year of service. And thank you for everything that you've given to Auburn. You deserve all the health and happiness in your days ahead. And now you actually get some time to relax and enjoy. Congratulations and Godspeed.
Thank you, Darlene.
Thank you, Darlene. And now I'm starting to, IPW Director, Bill Coyle.
Hi, Doreen.
Hi, Bill.
Very sorry to see you go. You have been a, a great supporter of the DPW. And a common theme tonight that I'm hearing is kindness and hardworking. And I can tell you that we've been the recipient of your kindness. I can remember a few years ago, after a major snowstorm, you had called me and said, I've been cooking all day for the DPW. I have a hot meal for everybody. And I drove up there and I could not believe how much food you had prepared for the entire DPW. And it was a very kind action. I could not believe that you had spent all that time. And I can tell you that my employees were thrilled. We'll never forget it. And again, a common theme that I hear is kindness. And we're, we're going to be very sorry to see you go. You've always supported the DPW. And it's been a pleasure working with you. I'm hoping you now can take some time. I know you're still going to be working hard at the State House. I hope you can take some time, spend with your family, and stop working so hard. Congratulations.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. And now I'll turn to Assistant Town Manager and CFO, Ed Kuzinovich.
Hi, Doreen. How are you?
Yeah.
I can tell you, I've known Doreen long before she came, became a board member. Back in the days before I had gray hair. I don't know if you remember that, Doreen. But I've known Doreen forever. And ever since I knew she was very active in, in local government affairs. And through the years, we developed not only a professional relationship, but a personal relationship that developed into what I call a friendship that will last forever. I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you, Doreen, for the years of dedication, commitment, and service to your community. Thank you for being such a valuable member of the, over the past 12 years. Through those years, you've, you've been a strong voice in advocating for the concerns, not only for the residents, but for the business community as well. Our community is a much better place to live because of the service. Doreen, you have always been a strong supporter of town administration, always willing to listen when problems arose, with an equal passion to help resolving those issues as well. Your accomplishments are endless. I could, I could be here all night and talk about Doreen's accomplishments. But just some on the financial side, you were very instrumental in putting the town in the best financial shape it's been in its history. We have record levels of free cash, our stabilization account is healthy. And we have other reserve accounts that are, that have positioned us well. Not to mention our outstanding excess levy of about 7.5 million. And for those of you who don't understand excess levy, it's a commitment that Doreen has made. It's a reflection of, of her, of her efforts to try to minimize the level of taxation on the residents of our community. For all that, we are thankful, Doreen. And we sincerely wish you, Howie, and your family good health, good fortune. Please know we're always welcome to come visit. Our doors are always open. We look forward to keeping in touch with you in the future. Had a great ride and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. I think I made the last speaker before we ask you to say a few remarks, Doreen. So I just, if anyone is on the call that I missed, my apologies. Please put your picture on and give a big wave so I can, I'm calling you. But I believe we've gone through all the speakers.
Julie.
Yes?
Julie. Yes. Hi, it's Ronnie Brooks. I'm, I'm not on by computer. I'm on by the phone.
That's great. That's great. Thank you, Ron Brooks.
After all that everyone said, there's almost nothing I can say. But I just want to thank Doreen for 12 years of exemplary service. Always been willing and helpful. Always willing to help without question. I wish you well in your future endeavors and your family. And we will continue to be good friends. So thank you again, Doreen. And all the other things that Kenny and all the other people said, every single one of them is true and more. I can't expound on it any better than this.
Thank you, Ron. That means a lot.
Hey, good night.
Thank you so much, Ron. Good night, Ron.
Bye, Julie.
Bye-bye. So.
My sister.
Yes, Mave Marie.
Hi, everybody from Auburn. So I'm one of Doreen's sisters. I'm, my name is Vogue. And I just had to say that you guys are all so lucky to have her in Auburn. But I am truly blessed to have her as a sister. She is far, everything you said about her is fantastic. But she is so much more than what everybody said. If you only knew her the way we do, we can count on her for everything. It's not just doing things for town. She is there for our family, for every single solitary thing that anybody could ever ask. So I just had to speak up and thank you for letting me. Love you, Doreen.
Absolutely. That was great. Anybody else? I don't want to miss anybody.
Julie, could I just say, Julie, could I just?
Yes.
Oh, gee, yes. Oh, thank you. Sorry. I should have spoken up a little. It's kind of a hard act to follow. Everybody's had such great things to say. I can certainly would like to extend my appreciation to Doreen for everything she's always done for the library, been so tremendously supportive. And when I think of Doreen, I think of the word gracious. And when I think of Doreen, I think of the word gracious. She's always so gracious at everything she does and she's so respectful to everybody and really, you know, a great model, role model for everybody. And so I thank you for everything that you've done, Doreen, for the entire town and certainly been library supportive. So on behalf of myself and my staff, we'd like to thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, Jean.
I also want to acknowledge that we have a number of department and division heads on the call, as well as from our office here, Rachel, Sue, and Sharon. I know all of whom are watching Doreen and plan to speak to you privately after this. So after hearing, likewise, I'm going to say the same thing other people said, after hearing so many heartfelt and warming tributes tonight to Doreen, it really is hard to come up with the right words without sounding redundant. But I have to tell you, Doreen Goodrich was one of the five selectmen who hired me for this position at the end of 2012. And Doreen was here when I was sworn in at the end of January, excuse me, at the end of 2010, at the end of January 2011, when I was sworn into the position, a couple months later. Doreen was there and has been ever since by my side. I've had the honor and the pleasure of working for Doreen during my entire tenure, tenure here. Doreen has always been supportive of and a huge advocate for both me and all of us in town administration, as you've heard. On a professional level, she's intuitive, perceptive, compassionate, empathetic, and passionate. And she really possesses true leadership skills. You're such a role model for everyone in the community and for young women as well. On a personal note, Doreen's been there for me and my family since I was hired. She's helped me get through the worst personal tragedy anyone could ever have, losing a child. And she's rejoiced over the happy times in my family as well. As her friends will attest to, Doreen is a generous, warm, funny, caring friend who does everything for everyone. And in true Doreen spirit, I have one was talking about the food that Doreen has made. I have to say today, well, starting Friday and today, and she continues, she actually made an individual cupcake for every single town employee over the past few days. She has been cooking nights and over the weekend, even on Mother's Day, to make all of us cupcakes. So she could hand deliver 200 of these precious little delicious treats. And I ate, so I can't show all of you, but you can take my word on it. It's delicious and beautiful and made with love. And this is Doreen's thanking all of us. And we want to thank Doreen. And yet, right up until her last day, she is still thanking us, which, for working for the town, which is, it, it just captures her spirit. So we are all here to thank her tonight for everything you've done for us, Doreen, and for the town of Auburn. You really are the true embodiment of public service, and you're a very skill person. I am proud to call you my boss. I'm proud to call you my friend. And I'll miss working with you. And I wish you all the best in the next phase of your life. So, and I want to thank all of you. And I know Doreen wants to say a few words as well, just to, to wrap up this evening's tribute. But I want to thank all of you for taking the time to do this for such a special. So Doreen, I'm going to turn.
Thank you, Julie. Well, I have to say I'm humbled by everyone's presence here tonight and touched, truly touched to see my family on, which was a very nice surprise. And as you all know, I have prepared my work, words tonight because I live by the motto, prior planning prevents poor performance. So thank you, everyone, for your kind words. I want to share some brief reflections and memories with you as I conclude this chapter of my service to the town of Auburn. My start on the Board in 2009 coincided with the adoption of a new town charter and with it, a new form of government. Having always been a believer in our new form of government, I was excited to grow in my new role along with our community as we step towards a new and more efficient way of conducting the people's business. With four term of Board leadership under my belt here in Auburn, I can say from close observation and involvement that the reorganization plan, which our town now operates under, works. Period. End of sentence. There is accountability, camaraderie, and long-range planning. We provide top-notch services to our residents. We've applied for and received millions of dollars in grant funding, and we're blessed to have the best public safety department in Massachusetts. I found myself reflecting recently on all of the conversations I had with residents during my first run for this office, when the number one concern was the condition and quality of our roads. Over the previous 12 years, we've paved hundreds of miles of those roads. The best approach to municipal government is to get the job done, and Auburn always gets the job done. Of course, these successes bring forth, not just from this Board, from a professional and forward-looking town manager. Also, growing into new, to, into a new role as our town manager embarked on a new form of governance was our first town manager, Julie Jacobson. Early in my tenure, as we started the process of searching for and hiring our first town manager, we knew an enormous amount of weight rested on the selection we would make. For our new form of government to succeed, we would need a leader who could bring us firmly into the 21st century. And Mrs. Jacobson, we found a leader who not only brought us up to par, but who now has our town setting the bar. Participating in the hiring of Mrs. Jacobson was one of the choices in this role I am most proud of, and our town continues to benefit from her service and leadership. I've seen many changes over my 12 years, but there have been a few constants since first being sworn in. Ed Kazanovich, our Assistant Town Manager and CFO, the finance wizard. 12 years and he had my spinning. The man lives and breathes municipal finance. Thank you for always answering my call. In the Selectmen's Office, Sharon, Sue, Patsy, Shannon, and Rachel, thank you for your efforts in providing the little more information I needed, the search for history of an item, making the calls, and providing the resources to do my job effectively. You make the world go round for all of us. Thank you for your persistence and diligence. You make us better public servants. Thank you to all the department heads, division heads, and each and every town employee. Thank you for being responsive to the questions, resident concerns, and issues I have brought to you. I have made friendships that will long, last long past my time on the Board. Though your commitment to your department and responsible, through your commitment to your departments and responsibilities, you make us better leaders for the town through inspiration. I found continued joy in learning and growing that comes along with this role, keeping current as a selectman, whether on legal issues, ethics, open meeting law, training through the MMA, Worcester County Selectmen's Association. The opportunities have been truly rewarding, and I hope to have been able to translate those into real results for our residents. Building relationships has also been a tremendous gift with residents, town employees, businesses, and organizations, which I might not have had an opportunity if not for my time on the Board. Your stories and your commitment to your community have been a continuous source of strength for me. Being in the public eye and occasionally being subject to criticism comes with the roles like this. But knowing I was standing up for the people and businesses of our, of our community always kept me going. I think back at all the meetings, hearings, and responsibilities I have attended or carried out as a member of the Board of Selectmen. The hearing for the current Dr. Arthur and Martha Cappas Recreation Complex, 61 A-land processes, dangerous dog hearings, license violations, license applications, proposals for a dog park, which recently opened in this beautiful, the single-use plastic bag ban. Each of these was to, was more to me than merely a decision or a debate, but an example of government touching the lives of residents. At the forefront of my mind during all these obligations was the need for our residents to know that government was doing the right thing, hearing their voices and concerns, and making decisions that were in the best interest of the community. Beyond such obligations, I have fond memories of more added events, including the tree weddings, Independence Day ceremonies, the Boston Post-Cane Awards, fall festivals, grant awards, sports championship celebrations, Eagle Scout recognitions, retirements, award ceremonies, ribbon cuttings, ground breakings, grant awards, dedications, Special Olympics, opening ceremonies, and award presentations. And of course, my participation in the very first Dancing with the Stars of Auburn with Chris Hugo. One of the blessings of this role is that in addition to the responsibilities we have selectmen bear, we also have the opportunity to see our neighbors coming together to celebrate the generosity and good that permeates our community. But the events that will always stand out most in my mind are those where we pay our respect to the men and women who wore the uniform to keep us safe, whether in our nation's armed forces or our public safety officials closer to home. The opportunity to thank veterans and to remember the service members who fell in the line of duty at Veterans Day celebrations and Memorial Day observances were always deeply moving to me. We have seen tragedy as well. And I think hard, I think often of the hardest loss for our community, the senseless murder of Officer Ron Tarantino, which changed all of us and showed the world the strength and character of all of us here in Auburn. To my fellow board members, thank you for your service to the town, and thank you for your support of me. While the voters are responsible to elect who sits here, as colleagues, you placed your faith in me several times over to serve as your chairperson. It's an honor to call you colleagues and friends. Thank you for your continued service to the town of Auburn. To my family, you know I could not have done this without you, without your patience and support. To my husband, my sons, my future daughter-in-law, my siblings, thank you for sharing me with the entire town. I want to close tonight by thanking the residents of the town of Auburn. Four times you placed your trust in me to carry out this leadership position. You told me you wanted me to work for you and to speak for you. I've always been humbled by your support, and I have made it my mission to do right by you these past 12 years. It was an honor and a joy to take your calls and emails. I hope you'll remember me as someone who was glad to answer the call, whether in the grocery store, early in the morning, or someone who was willing to come by and visit your business. The trust you've placed in me in the last 12 years has meant more than you know, and I could never put it into words. I hope I have made you proud. Auburn is my home. All of you are my family. And from the bottom of my heart, I thank each and every one of you.
Thank you, Doreen. I know, I don't know how to do this remotely, but many, many thanks and many cheers. You deserve it.
Thank you.
And now, you're not out of this yet. That's what I have to say. So now I can't wait to turn this meeting back to you, to chairperson, and get on to the, to the next agenda items, because you still have work to do for the next, the next few minutes. Thank you. Thank you all for logging in. It's great to see your family. We're thrilled to see your sons, your husband, your future daughter-in-law, and your sister. Just feel to share this, this moment and hear the tributes to you. It's, it's just heartwarming for all of us to be part of it. So that's, that's my end of it, and I'm going to turn it to you to go to the next item.
Thank you, Julie. So we are moving on with the agenda. Please, anyone who. Bye, everyone. Thank you, everyone. We're going to move on with the agenda. If you want to log off, please, we won't be offended. Moving on with the agenda items, we have no communications under Board of Selectmen general items. We did have a transient vendor license application, which I believe has been requested to be held until the next meeting. There were some, some issues that needed to be addressed. Julie, I'm going to turn to you with, am I correct that, that we're going to wait until the next meeting, until some of the address, the issue didn't go before police?
Through the chair, that's, that's absolutely correct. We are, through the police department, just recommending, through Lieutenant Lemon, in a conversation with him today, just recommending that we hold this item until the next agenda, just to give the police department the opportunity to do a little bit further review.
Great. Thank you. And then carried over from our, our last meeting is the vote on the appointments for candidates for the Finance Committee. We will need to take two votes. Mr. Coppins, can I just confirm with you that you were able to review the tapes and you will be participating?
I did multiple times, listened to the interviews, and I thank the Board for their courtesy in holding, holding this. But I would have certainly entrusted all of you with making the right choice in my absence.
Okay. So you will be participating in this vote. Thank you. So as members know, we, we can't, we can review it if you feel it's necessary. But there was some discussion on the, the precinct openings. And of course, we cannot fill all of the precinct openings. We had three of the candidates from one of the, what, the same precinct and one from another. So I will open it up if board members want to go directly into a motion or if board members want to have discussion, I will now open it up for that.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Carpenter.
I would make a motion that we appoint Kara Ann Westerman to a term ending on June 30th, 2021.
We have a motion by Mr. Carpenter. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Carpenter and a second by Mr. Ren. Is there any discussion under the motion? Seeing none, by a roll call vote, Mr. Berthel.
No.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman La Liberty? Vice Chairman La Liberty?
No.
There was a, there was a slip of the tongue. And the chair votes no. Is there another motion?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we appoint Erica Uker to a term ending June 30th, 2021.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second for Erica Uker. Is it Iker or Uker?
It's Iker.
Okay. That's what I had said previously. Thank you. Is there, is there any discussion under the motion? Seeing none. Mr. Berthel.
No.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
No.
Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes.
And the chairman votes no. Is there another motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint Patrick Jones to the Finance Committee.
Is there?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? By a roll call vote, Mr. Berthel?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes. Is there another motion? Are we going to fill both seats tonight? Or are we going to hold one seat?
I'll make a motion that we appoint, is it Diane Byrne, to a term ending June 30th, 2021.
And I'll, I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Carpenter and a second by Mr. Berthel. Is there any discussion?
Sorry, did I hear that June, expiring this June 30th?
Yes, we have to do two motions.
Okay, okay. Sorry about that.
Seeing no other discussion, Mr. Berthel?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Is there a second motion to appoint both candidates for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2024?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we appoint Patrick Jones to a term ending in June 30th, 2023? No, 2024, pardon me.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the second? Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Carpenter and a second by Mr. Berthel. If there's no discussion, Mr. Berthel?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Is there a motion regarding the second applicant?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we appoint Diane Byrne to a term ending June 30th, 2024.
Okay.
We have a motion by Mr. Carpenter, a second by Mr. Berthium. Is there any discussion? By a roll call vote, Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And I think, Erica, I know you're on the call, I thank you for your, oh, Kara and Erica are both on this call. I thank everyone who put in for this. I appreciate your service and I'm a believer in bringing new people in to get them involved and they're, and I hope you will continue your involvement with the Energy Committee and additional work, and thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me and for your consideration.
Moving on, we have gift acceptance for the Police Department. A minute. From Jeffrey LePlante, in the amount of $100, and the designated use is moral support. Is there a motion?
Motion to...
We have a motion by Mr. La Liberty to accept with gratitude, a second by Mr. Berthium. Is there any discussion? By a roll call vote, Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. The next item we have is Town Manager Items. The first item is vote to amend Chapter 2 of the Department of Developmental Inspection Services and Chapter 6 of Department of Public Services of the Reorganization Plan approved on April 2011. Mrs. Jacobson.
Through the chair, thank you very much. I bring before the board this evening two proposed amendments to the reorganization plan that was approved in April of 2011. This is coming on the recommendation of Labor Council. Just to clarify roles and responsibilities, I know right now we're in Chapter 2 first, so this is the Department of Developmental Inspection Services. Labor Council has just recommended that we codify, that we have since then created an Economic Development Division, and it is operating as such, so we do want to get language into the reorganization plan to reflect that that division exists. So through the chair, do you want me to talk about the second one or just that one right now?
We're going to take, can they be done in one motion?
Yes, they can.
And then go ahead, go speak to both.
Thank you. So Chapter 6 is the Department of Public Services, which includes cable television, the Veterans Library, and the Senior Center. We have to be consistent, as both Town Council and Labor Council have pointed out many times to me, as well as to others who've requested this information, that we have to be consistent with the charter. And the language in Chapter 6 has some areas that may look like it's not consistent with the charter with regard to roles and responsibilities. So Labor Council strongly recommends that we, right in the reorganization plan, put the roles and responsibilities of the director and of the Labor Board of Trustees, just to codify the existing situation that was made, that came about as a result of the charter. So just so everyone knows, the reorganization plan is supposed to reflect the charter, not the other way around. So the charter is the overriding document, it supersedes everything, and the reorganization plan is really the plan, structural plan, that supports everything that the charter has. So these two revisions are proposed to codify that and to be in keeping with our charter.
Do board members have any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if I'll say it right, but I'll make a motion to amend Chapter 2, Department of Developmental Inspection Services, and Chapter 6, Department of Public Services of the reorganizational plan approved in April 2011. The state changes pertaining to town-appointed tenant board members?
Nope, nope, just on A, Lionel.
Oh, just on A, okay.
Yeah, so just A is presented by the town manager.
It's presented by the town manager, okay.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Berthium, a second by Mr. Ren, is there any discussion? Seeing none, by a roll call vote, Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Moving on, we have Town Manager Item 5B, the state changes pertaining to the town-appointed tenant board members. Mrs. Jacobson.
Through the chair, thank you very much. The town clerk asked me to put in your packet, and this is why this is on the agenda, the changes that pertain to town-appointed tenant board members on housing authorities. So in your packet, you have the public housing notice that was issued by the Department of Housing and Community Development. And as you probably know, because I know the town clerks come before the board and mentioned it several times over the past couple of years, but the state and DHCD were promulgating regulations related to housing authorities, and those regulations go into effect on May 15th. And I put the regulations in your packet, it is a little complicated, but I'll try to boil it down as best as I can, so I hope that I can make everyone understand it. And there's no vote that's needed tonight, we just wanted the board to be aware of what the requirements are with regard to this. So as of May 15th, the Boards of Selectmen appoint the vacant, there will be one tenant-appointed seat that Boards of Selectmen are to appoint moving forward. So there are five members on the Housing Authority, one is appointed by the governor, so that leaves four elected positions moving forward. As of May 15th, the first vacant position that comes up is the position that is the board-appointed tenant seat. So unfortunately, as a consequence of the passing of Alice Ray, who's a member of the Housing Authority, the first seat would now become the board-appointed tenant seat. So there's a couple of different processes here, and I've had conversations, as has the town clerk, with our town council, and basically, the new regulation's going to affect May 15th. So prior to May 15th, you have done this before, you appointed Monica to the Auburn Housing Authority when there was a vacancy on the seat, and that follows Chapter 41, Section 11. And under that situation, the Housing Authority, under that law, the Housing Authority would have to notify the board within 30 days of the creation of a vacancy. So we haven't been notified yet, you still would have had the 30-day period, but you would be notified, and at that point, you would call a, you would look for candidates like you did before, and if the Board, if the Housing Authority had notified you, both the Housing Authority and the Selectmen would by roll call vote appoint a new member. If the Housing Authority didn't notify you, which they didn't last time, then the Board is the sole voter of that seat, which is how Monica got onto the seat. So now, in this situation, you have a board seat that is supposed to become the tenant-appointed, the board-appointed tenant seat. It is my understanding that the Housing Authority last week had a meeting and voted to appoint a resident to the seat. And I have to tell you that that vote can't, then that resident, unfortunately, that vote can't be recognized. As Town Council has said, that was not the process to be followed. Prior to these new laws coming into effect, the process would have been, as I just said, they would have notified you, you would, the Board of Selectmen would have appointed the seat either in concert with the Housing Authority or on your own, depending if they notified you or not. But these new regulations that go into effect say that first vacant seat as of May 15th, that seat is still vacant. So even though the Housing Authority took a vote last week to appoint someone, that vote was not done under the authority of the law, that was the Board of Selectmen's vote to be taken. So as Attorney Henigan has said, technically, that seat is still vacant, which it will be vacant by May 15th, which is when this new law goes into effect, because you have no way to go through the whole process with all the notifications that are required under the old law to get a seat appointed by the 15th. So the new law will apply. So there will be a process that's in your packet, the processes that, under the law, that you would go, the Board of Selectmen would reach out to a tenant, I'm sorry, there's a name for it, a tenant board, if one exists. And it is our understanding through the clerk's office that there is no such tenant board at the Auburn Housing Authority. So therefore, there's a whole process that the Board of Selectmen will have to follow, as a process the Auburn Housing Authority has to follow. They, without that tenant board, the Auburn Housing Authority is going to be required to send notification to every single resident of the Housing Authority and to solicit members, excuse me, residents of the Housing Authority properties who are interested in being considered, and then the Housing Authority would notify the Board of Selectmen as to the names of those would like to be considered. Then at that point, the Board of Selectmen would have 30, I believe there's a 30-day period after the deadline for the tenants to submit names if they're interested, the Board of Selectmen would then have 30 days to choose a tenant. So in other words, you'd probably have an interview as you did before, but that is up to you, and then within 30 days of getting that list of tenants who are interested, you would vote. If the Housing Authority does not provide any names to you within 30 days, then the point, the town, the Board of Selectmen can appoint any eligible tenant of your choosing to that seat. So in other words, you try to solicit, the Housing Authority has to solicit names first. If no one comes forward, but the Board has a name, you could reach out to that person if they're willing to serve, then you can make that appointment. The last piece here is if there's no one who's eligible or willing to serve as a town-appointed tenant board member, then the Housing Authority may seek a waiver from the state of the requirement that the town appoint a tenant, but that won't be known until after all the required legal outreach is done to the tenants to determine who's interested. So I wanted you all to see that, because you probably are a little bit away from having that happen, but several people have asked about the process and the apparent vote that was taken by the Housing Authority last week to appoint a tenant that, at this point, cannot be recognized because that is a Board of Selectmen appointment. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do members have any questions? We'll wait to see.
I'm sorry, have we had any correspondence with the Housing Authority Board in regard to their vote?
Through the chair, that's a great question. Me, myself, I have not. The town clerk has spoken to someone at the Housing Authority prior to their vote, and explained the process, and explains that the seat would be the appointment of the Select Board. And that was done a couple of days prior to, I believe it was done when the town clerk received the posting of the meeting notice and saw the agenda item, and immediately reached out and explained that the law requires the Board of Selectmen to make that appointment. And again, I will point out, prior to the new law, the old law still required the Board of Selectmen to make that appointment. It was just a different process.
Thank you.
Is there anything further from the board? Julie, do you think a correspondence should go to them or just wait to see what happens?
Through the chair, another good question. When I spoke to Town Council today, I believe that, I think the most appropriate course of action would be for correspondence to go, I'm happy to do it, to go from me to the Chairman of the Housing Authority, Mr. Page, right now, and probably with a copy to the Lori Brennan, to the Director, notifying them of the legal process that has to be followed, and enclosing a packet. I know they did receive the packet from DHCD because it was sent to all housing authorities in the state, but I could certainly send a letter reminding them that that is the process and that we look forward to working with them through the Board of Selectmen to make the next appointment to the tenant seat.
Does that work for board members? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
And the next item is to recognize Darlene Coyle as the recipient of the Commonwealth Harrowing 2021 Award. Mrs. Jacobson.
Through the chair, this is just, again, hi Darlene, just such another exciting announcement, and I wanted to get it on the agenda this evening, and I really wanted to get it on there while the chair, Doreen Goodrich, is still here, because through her role in the Senator's office, she was involved in this as well, so I wanted her to have the opportunity to say a few words as well, given it's her last night. But we are so excited to have been notified last week that Darlene was selected as one of the Commonwealth Heroines of 2021, who are going above and beyond her job, which you all know she does every day, all day, and always has, but especially during COVID, I have to tell you, Darlene's dedication, perseverance, and unending energy has carried us all through. She has kept this community safe, she's kept this community strong, and she's kept all of us as employees safe through COVID, and having to learn a whole new language, having to learn everything new. While we planned for pandemics, no one is ever prepared for a pandemic, of course, but with Darlene at the helm, we all knew we were in good hands and that we would pull through it. And I would tell you, Darlene goes above and beyond, you will all see her light on here at all hours of the day and evening. Weekends, I remember her going out on Saturday to pick out a freezer and a refrigerator because we were ramping up to do vaccines, vaccine clinics, and I remember her going out on a Saturday and spending time shopping to get the right refrigeration equipment so we could store the vaccine. And I could give you 100 examples of what she's done, but then to just say she does it quietly, she does it faster than anyone I know, she actually moves quicker than anyone I know through the building and gets so much done. Just her energy level is just unbelievable. So I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that she was selected. I know there'll be a program, there'll be a formal announcement, there's also going to be an event that I'll make sure everyone has the information on that you log into, it's going to have to be done remotely in the state, but this is quite an honor. So Doreen, if you want to mention it too, because Senator Mike Moore was the sponsor of Darlene's nomination, so I know if you don't mind, wear that hat for just a moment and explain a little bit about the process and how, what a competition this was.
Yeah, so congratulations, Darlene. So this is an honor, given annually by the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women, and the idea is to recognize women who, it was up until two years ago, and I'm not sure why they changed the name, but up until two years ago, it was called the Unsung Harrowing Award, which is, you know, very telling, people who are doing the work behind the scenes and don't look for the recognition. And each year, the Senator, and he has a large district, seven communities, so we get together as staffers in the office and we discuss different ones that we've come in contact with over the last year, who we think, you know, would be an appropriate nomination for the Senator to make. We then go into discussions with the Senator and point out, you know, point out the reasons that this person should be nominated. And when it came to Darlene Coyle, especially during the year of a pandemic, the discussion was Darlene Coyle has a passion for public health, and she doesn't do it through enforcement, she does it through education. And that is huge. She wants people to understand public health. She doesn't want to find them, she doesn't want to close them down, she wants to educate people on the importance of public health. And so with many other nominees... And so with many other nominations, she was submitted and the Senator received notice this week that Darlene was selected as a award recipient from the Commission on the Status of Women. She will be recognized at a virtual event. Unfortunately, she, the event won't be held at the State House because it's a beautiful event. But she will be recognized at a virtual event and she will be in the company of many other women who are just doing great things for their community. So congratulations, Darlene.
Thank you so much. I, it's difficult to find the words. And I appreciate, I appreciate the confidence that the Senator and all of you have placed to me. I take my job very seriously. And sorry, I'm getting emotional. I didn't want to do that. But I do, I do think that everything we do, you know, is done with the leadership all around us and I have great support. And I want to thank, you know, I just, I want to thank all of you for always being there for me. I feel like Auburn has always been my home. For those of you that don't know, I actually started my career here. It worked, I worked for the town for several years until I got an opportunity to become a director and learn more. There was an opportunity presented. I came back to the town and I just, my heart is, my heart is here. I appreciate all of you and through this last year, that's been so challenging. I couldn't have done it without all of my staff. You know, Eileen and Jordan are the heart of the Board of Health. And we have a great Board that leads us. And everybody here in my department supports everybody else. And it's because of that environment that we can do good things. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations, Darlene. You make us all proud.
So moving on, the last item is under Board of Selectmen member items, and I actually put this on myself. I don't know if my fellow Board members are aware of how many communities have begun, begun the process or, or have already completed the process of updating the names of their Board of Selectmen to Select Board and keeping it gender neutral. But many, many, and I learned about this, it's in the Constitution, they, they were called Board of Selectmen. And, you know, I thought it was fitting on my net, last night, my last meeting, to just talk, ask the Board to consider forming another subcommittee at, you know, a future meeting and seeing what the process is. It's not a difficult process, but it does need to go through the state. And I think it doesn't put any female who, who may, may be on the Board in the future in the position of say, of making this motion because it's something that I think we should have already been discussing. So I hope that the Board will consider this when you have a new Board on May 18th and after, and you consider reorganizing. Again, I can get you some of the information on it, but I think it would be a good thing to do and join the rest of the many communities have our, who have already gone to Select Board. Does anyone have anything?
I do, yeah. I, I had, went golfing out in Harvard this past weekend and I noticed in several communities as I was driving out that way, it was Select Board. So yeah, any information you have on that, I'm very much open to seeing how we go about making that change.
It's not complicated.
Okay.
Thank you. And we have, we have the minutes of March 22nd, 2021.
Through the Chair, sorry, one second. I think Mr. Bertheum had raised his hand and I think Mr. La Liberty.
I'm sorry. Go, go ahead, Mr. Bertheum.
Madam Chair, were you looking to form that subcommittee tonight or just for us to do it in a future meeting?
You can do it in a future meeting. I just wanted to bring it up so that no one was on the spot, you know. But certainly I would hope it would be something that you consider doing in the near future. We didn't, I didn't put it on the agenda as an action item, just a discussion, but thank you. And Mr. La Liberty, did you have something?
I just wanted to voice support for the idea of changing the name. I've noticed some other communities have already done it, like you said. So I'd be interested in learning what the actual process is. I can't imagine it would be very difficult, especially since it's already been done. I just wanted to voice support.
Great, thank you. So I, I hope that this is something that you'll look at. Mr. Carpenter, did you have something?
No, I was, I was going to say that actually that was something that I was going to ask the Board to do as a, as a project when we were going to set our goals, because I did, as you say, notice that we had many people, many other communities who had taken that step. And I think it's meaningful to many people. We've been fortunate to have many wonderful ladies who have served as members of our Board and we've benefited from their service. Their names, you know, at least in, for me, certainly they've, they've been a source of inspiration.
Great. Well, thank you everyone for your consideration. If there's no, no other business before the Board under member items, we have the minutes of March 22nd, 2021. Are there any corrections or omissions? Seeing none, the Chairman will accept them as written. And Sharon, as always, thank you for the excellent job you do maintaining the minutes and getting them up on the, on the website. So thank you. And in my final motion, call for a motion, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Mr. La Liberty and a second by Mr. Ren, by a roll call vote. Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, and before you, you move on, I would just say that this might just be an interruption in your service on the Board, Mrs. Goodrich. There's no guarantee that you won't come back.
Well, thank you for that. Mr. Ren, I caught, I'm sorry, hold on. Mr. Bertheum, Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Ren?
Yes, and thank you again, Doreen.
Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes, and thank you.
And the Chair votes yes. We are adjourned.
Hi, Doreen, thank you.
Did you run away?
Thank you. Jean, thanks for being on, and Mike Marino, Joanna, Bill, Darlene, Rachel, thank you all for being on. All right, thank you.